Yes, there we are.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to convene a regular meeting of the Rise of Township High School Board of Education Committee of the Whole?
So.
Listen, you just roll.
Ms. Madanero? Hi, this is Mrs. Hickson.
Hi.
Mrs. Morris.
Hi.
Dr. Fisher.
Roll, right?
Roll.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Openable?
Hi.
Mrs. Lynn?
Hi.
Mrs. Marvman?
Hi.
Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How many comments do we have?
None.
So, we're gonna go right to number seven, discussion item.
All right, well, thank you, everyone, um, for our first.
Yeah, hold on, sorry. Oh, no, probably didn't have the, I need two seconds.
So, our first committee of the whole meeting, I'm really excited about this, I'm not so crazy about the acting, acting of how that has been created for us, but, you know, whatever, we're here. So, now, one of the reasons I wanted to have the committee of the whole is because I wanna make sure that I'm giving board members as much opportunity and as much time to consider, items before going to formal action vote. And so, for this meeting, we're gonna be talking about, um, to have four opportunities to engage in, in, in meaningful dialogue before having to take action in that final meeting. So, at the first, the first opportunity would be at a committee of the whole meeting like we're having here today. Then, the second opportunity would be two weeks from now when we have a board meeting. The third opportunity for those who choose to participate is we will set up times to have board briefings. And so, this would be no more than two members at a time, we'll be able to come in, um, and have these conversations. I will say, those board briefings, since it's gone to the first board meeting, those discussion items are now on the agenda as action items. And then, you'll have that second board meeting where we'll have an opportunity for discussion before taking the final vote. And so, essentially, you'll get a good forty-five to fifty days to, to sit with an item, as opposed to thirty. And then, we'll provide more access to you. Anything that's going to be voted on or discussed in a board meeting would be also, would also be added into the weekly board updates as well. So, there's another opportunity for you guys to read about that, but I think it's important for us to have, uh, this opportunity to discuss in this committee of the whole. It's, I think it's beneficial for board members to ensure that you're veteran form. It's also beneficial for us because before that first board meeting, we're getting an opportunity to hear questions from you as we kind of craft that final board memo that will be included in the board packet for the first board meeting. Any questions? All right, well, we'll see how it goes, we'll adjust as we need, um, but I'm excited that, um, you guys are willing to, to go on this adventure and try this structure.
Always have questions. Are we always gonna be meeting in this room for Cal or did, was this the meeting that we discussed moving on?
I think during the summer, we, we all, all meetings have it at PMSA. But then, perhaps for the school year, we would alternate to East and West for the day, so if you have an opportunity, it'd be perfect.
Let me send you a different one.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
During the school, the summer, they do have a construction, so it's.
That makes sense. Yeah.
I mean, if you guys are okay with this space, I think it's more conducive to conversation in here rather than in there. Then, I just, careening, trying to see each other's faces, read body language, it's a little more difficult. Yeah, so, if you guys are open to this space. I'm gonna talk about it. Um, I will say, so, the, the, one of the purposes of the committee of the whole also is to bring us all together. So, we'll have a facilities meeting, but not all the board members are there. Or we'll have a finance meeting, and not all the board members are there. So, this is an opportunity to combine those, uh, combine those meetings. Not looking to combine the, the parent nature meeting, that, that, that type of structure takes on a different, um, type of need, but they're trying to collapse these and just make it more efficient and save time, uh, for everybody.
Yes, it's something.
Please.
I think this is a great idea, um, as most of you know, it's a school board meeting for student district eighty-eight, and this is something that they do, you know, they call it all commit.
Okay.
And it does work. It really shortens everything. I think it's a really good idea, they'll be kinda, you know, adopt it a little bit, toot it a little bit, but, you know, student district eighty-eight does it.
I think we should make it ours, so, you know, and honestly, I, I'm not trying to dissuade us from having conversation at board meetings, but I do want the board meetings to be business meetings. So, I think it'd be good to remind our community that we're having these meetings as well, as far as board, like, all the other opportunities, so we're, we're fully informed before we make these.
I want to just make sense, I'll mention this over.
Several.
Several years.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, several, several, yeah, so.
Well, I'm excited that we're moving in the direction of most, so that's, it's a positive step for all. So, as we move into discussion items, uh, the first thing I wanna just talk about are any of the facilities information, um, so LT has two pieces we would like to talk through.
Power school?
What's that?
This is a power.
Yeah, that's one, that's one. Oh, power school, and transportation. Let's go to transportation, let me fix that, I apologize for that.
Well, good evening, everybody, uh, tonight, we would like to talk about the student transportation extension for Proviso Township High Schools. Uh, Proviso bidded this out roughly August twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. We had one responsible bidder, it was First Student, and First Student actually been the only bidder for our transportation since we started it in-house, I'm sorry, since the state approved it. So, First Student is looking to get Proviso to extend the last two years of a five-year agreement. The five, the, the five-year agreement is three is mandatory, year four and five are both optional for Proviso. As we speak, First Student charges Proviso two-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents for AM route for East-West Madison Science Academy. And the same thing for, uh, the PM route going back home. First Student is proposing a three-point-five percent increase, so you'll see in the column twenty-five, twenty-six, it says two-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents would be the route charge if we have seven routes or less for our school, which we will not be. So, our route, dollar amount will go to two-thirty-six, seventy-six, which is in that column where it says seven plus routes. And then, in year twenty-six, twenty-seven, it will be two-forty-eight for seven or less routes, or two-forty-five for seven or more. We have eight routes at Madison Science Academy, we have nineteen routes right now at Proviso West, and we have sixteen at Proviso East. We do organize those route to trunk, truncate students to save money, so if we have to reduce those routes because we have ten students on route number one and five students on route number two, we will ask First Student to truncate those routes so we can save those dollars, uh, per day. And then, the same thing if we get, uh, extra students to be, uh, enrolled at the Proviso Township High Schools. Uh, during the conversation with First Student, I wanted to make sure that we highlighted a few items that were problems for Proviso. Uh, one of the items were to make sure that First Student understood that we needed students to get here on time. So, the first bullet point that favors Proviso is to ensure that they guarantee routes to be on time, and if not, there would be a discount on the rates. Uh, the second one, if anything that was twenty minutes or more, it would be a seventy-five percent discount. Uh, we did have about six to eight of those this school year, a few was in public weather, one was the train over on Twenty-Fifth Avenue coming over, um, by St. Charles from North Lake. And then, we wanted to better the evening activity support runs to make sure that students were getting off at three-thirty, because last year, First Student was getting off at four-thirty. So, we're getting the Thomas Grove North, Thomas Grove South too late, and they really didn't wanna play that late, so now, we're gonna be getting there on time and be able to, uh, work with our conference as we have done in the past. Uh, the last one is to make sure that all of the, uh, supervisors provide a field observation report, they come out, they look at the buses to make sure they're fueled up correctly, make sure the drivers have all their safety devices on, uh, make sure that they're speaking to the students in a kindly fashion, so on and so forth, to make sure the experience for the students are, um, pleasant. Next slide. I'm sorry, can you go back one slide? Is there any questions about, uh, the dollar amount per route? Anything about the routes or the favor, favorable changes that Proviso asked for?
So, the discounts, it's, uh, when it's weather or train, does that go on them, like, right? Or is it, like, oh, because it's this and it was, like, an act of God, essentially, then they don't have to discount?
Great question, so, two things we agreed upon for Proviso West, because Proviso West, on the east side, there's a train track. So, if the bus is coming from Bellwood, if they get caught at the track, there's nothing really we can do. But the First Student is running late because they had an absent driver or the driver had a flat in the morning, and if they don't have redundant drivers to replace that driver, then we're gonna get that seventy-five percent discount.
At mechanics, is their responsibility, any sort of?
Yeah, all of that, all of that is strictly on First Student. We, we, in good faith, we pay them every month, uh, thanks to Dr. Hill and Mr. Moevitt, um, so we are putting some hard lines in the sand, so to speak, to make sure we're getting a great service, because two years ago was pretty bad.
I have a question. Now that, uh, we're looking at extending a contract with them, increasing their, their pay, how has this year gone? Like, has it been, I mean, it didn't start well, there were issues in the beginning, but now, we're coming to a contract with the last two years, where we have some options to kinda stay where we are or renew, has it been a significant diff, difference from the previous to now the service that's been received?
Yeah, so, each morning, Sergio and I will let myself, we get together with First Student at six AM, and we have our cadence around, how many drivers are absent? Is there anything late, is the First Student app working? The first six weeks of school, we did have some trying situations because we had late enrollees, and because a lot of parents just didn't know how to download the First Student app or navigate the app. So, what we're doing this year, we're hoping to get together for Power School, I'm not sure if that's a hundred percent broke out, Mike?
Yeah, we got it, power integrated now.
So, that pan, families have one place to go and get their route, their bus pickup time and their bus drop-off time, and they won't have to look at a sheet that's online. And all of that'll be right there for the parents and the students to review. Uh, First Student, at the beginning of the year, was bad probably about a ninety to ninety-five percent. There was a lot of internal problems, uh, that we investigated that was on Proviso. Uh, quite a few people did not know how to navigate the sheet online, um, quite a few of them were sitting in the car playing music with their student, and the bus kinda zips by because you don't see anybody on the, on the corner corner, uh, but we got all those corrected, and we did have a few, um, really late buses getting to activities and then, late like forty-five minutes. And every month, we have a once-a-month cadence with them before they invoice us, and we make sure that we hone in on those, and we use text messages and emails to keep up with those to make sure that we're getting the proper discount from First Student. So, overall, I would give First Student, uh, A minus, uh, but the first six to eight weeks is always challenging because we did Mr. Ashop, about twenty-five percent of our students are enrolling late or more. So, it, it, it's pretty, it's pretty bad. So, that negatively affected for sure, but, uh, we're working with families and doing.
Two years ago.
Enrolling?
No, I'm talking about the routing.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
And to speak to, uh, Mr. Taylor's point, what we have now is we have it set up where every night, our Power School data is sent to them, so they can route them automatically in their system, and then, they send us back the routes. So, it's pretty automatic now, before, it was a manual process when the kid was enrolled, they'd fill out a line on the spreadsheet, and then, um, I would say, I don't know, maybe six months ago, we got it finally all automatic, so if they enroll late, so there'll be a problem, you know, for that leading up to the enrollment, but if we have their first name and home address, they're gonna get routed.
Yes, I have a question about how are we documenting, uh, any anomalies, right? So, if someone, a parent were to call and say, this route was ghost, you know, ghost bus, right, never showed up, phantom bus, or, uh, it was late, are we documenting those? And do we have the data for, in order for us to negotiate those discounted rates?
So, for last year, we do not have a flowable chart to identify those KPIs, but this year, we've been working with Ms. Lee and Ms. Moevitt to come over and inform that we believe is uh, conducive for reports throughout Proviso, because some parents, they call the man off, or some parents, they call the parent coordinator, most parents call me and Sergio, and we should be populating all that information and student ID numbers on those sheets, so that when you do wanna see it quarterly or monthly, we can say, listen, these were the ninety-four issues over the last ninety days. So, we do have a plan for the upcoming year, but we did not have a sheet to organize those last year.
Have we talked about opt-in as an option? Because, I mean, I know that my registration test, nothing about transportation, and I know that I would like to see, at some point, us ask, uh, on the registration form, do you plan on using a district bus? Right, so that we can gain, because if we have five kids on a bus, ten kids on a bus, we combine a route, that's a lot, that's a lot of money, right? And there's probably a lot less, how many students do we have?
So, we did talk about.
Forty-six hundred, and how many kids actually use the bus, do we even know that?
No, we don't, we've been asking First Student, provide them a bagging in and a bagging off of us.
Even just the head count, how many kids are on the bus every day, they don't have a clicker on them? Right, they should be counting heads as they get on the bus.
They, they don't, but that, that's something we can add.
I would like to see that put into the contract if we are going to go with renewal, because we need data, if we have no idea how many heads are on the bus, how can we negotiate?
Because the line for drop-off is extremely long, and if we're estimating these kids are actually on the bus and we're paying for them to be on the bus, they're really being dropped off every day, it's a waste.
So, we did talk about that internally, one of the main issues is that you might have LT jumping on the bus on Mondays and Fridays, and then, mom and dad bringing them home on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and if he hops out, what is he gonna do for those days, right? Or, you, you always get extra ridership, high ridership in the winter months, it's cold outside, kids don't wanna walk, they don't wanna bike, so ridership goes up. Soon as we get seventy-five degrees outside, kids wanna bike, they wanna, you know, cart together and do their best way to get to school. So, I think it might be, uh, in my opinion, it might be a mistake to have a hard line in the sand for opt-in or opt-not, because a challenging situation should occur in week number ten, and what do we?
And I, I mean, but a head count. A head count, a head count would help us determine if that's even.
Because you could plan for seasonality, right?
Right.
Knowing that, like, in the wintertime, you have a thousand kids.
Right.
Well, springtime, but, um, I think we can get there, but struggle is, we don't have a daily count of students, right? So, to get to that seasonality piece, we wanna look at trend and say, you know, when it's, when, you know, between November and, and March, we know that ridership goes up twenty-five percent, like, I can't specifically point to that yet. Until we can get, so to Jenny's point, or, I'm sorry, board member Barvman, President Barvman, to her point is, like, we need to know ridership on the weekends. And so, I think, uh, LT, I think that's something we could build into the next contract and talk to them about. But ideally, I would love them to badge in.
Right, right, but I mean, there's some very basic.
We know, like, this kid is supposed to be picked up on the spot or dropped off at this spot, and that does come with increased costs.
But I really, I like the, the opt-in and, um, out, because as a parent, I knew my kid was never getting on the bus, that's just plain and simple. And it's not like they can't decide, like, half of the school year, like, hey, mom's car is no longer existing, and I need transportation, they can reach out to you and says, hey, I need to, I need bus transportation for my child now, but to just start this year off with a clear idea of what parents, because these parents know, the ones that's dropping their kid off, for the most part, they know if they drop off every day or if they don't. So, they can say, yep, my kid needs bus service, I want them to catch the bus whether they do it or not, but this is what I want for them. So, it should, to me, it just, it could be an option at registration for yes, because I know eighty-eight is on their, uh, registration form. Do you want bus service at nine? And if you don't, you say no, and if you do, you, you get a route and it's there.
So, the, oh, should I, do you have any other questions? So, year four is optional, or we can renew, and then, year five, the sample is at two years together, we can renew.
Yeah, they prefer to do the two years, because right now, as they re-bidding contracts throughout districts that are similar to Proviso, uh, the value escalated values anywhere from eleven to twelve percent. So, they've given us a three-point-five, which three-point-three of that is salaries, we're taking two-tenths of a percent as a profit, because of Proviso's longstanding relationship with First Student, and because we've been pushing them to be a better partner for picking up on that, so, uh, in my opinion, because of elevated gas costs, elevated bus salaries, we should not go out to bid, because for sure, it's gonna be more than three-point-five.
But once we got that data.
Right, then we can.
I think by that, yes, by the end of this term, I think it's always at its place to make adjustments, make a more informed decision. But we, this is why we're doing this, we, we have a lot of questions here, we'll work together as a team to address these and update our board memo, uh, to incorporate some of this stuff, if we can, if possible.
Just curious, did you say if there were other, other people that bid in for this contract, or did you say that this was the only group that we got?
This was the only group. So, this is AM to PM morning, the evening transportation, and so, think about this, right? First Student, main hub for Proviso East and Madison Science Academy, is located right by Maybrook. No other bus company is close, so if you go away to Summit, which is the closest bus company, they have to fleet all of their vehicles this way, the prices are gonna go up, and they won't be competitive. So, most, most districts receive a bid from the local hub within their township or community.
All right, LT, I think you got this right now, for your. Well, this is the transportation, uh, this is JCI, here you go.
So, this is JCI, National Control Incorporated, this is for our building assets control system, which is your ID badge, to control your printer access and also get you inside the buildings. Uh, this is year number two for our access control system, we, uh, installed it a year ago. Uh, we do believe that it'll bring a lot of value if we have a professional looking at the software, key pads, uh, get antiquated or go, 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 won't illuminate, uh, and any other wires could be severed or any other catastrophic dangers could happen to the system. Uh, and speaking with Michael Swanson, it is, uh, highly favored to make sure that we hire someone to manage that. Uh, that is in the magnitude of around thirty-six thousand dollars for East-West Madison Science Academy for a three-year term of a hundred and nine thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-two dollars. We do have roughly eighteen units here at Madison Science Academy needing badge in to get into the administration center, and also downstairs, and a few other MDF and IDF closets over at Proviso East. We have roughly twenty-four, uh, stadium building, main fieldhouse building, and also the A and the B building, and then, over at Proviso West, we have roughly twenty-four as well. Really important that people be able to get in the building twenty-four hours a day, this helps us kinda measure who's in the building, uh, if I badge in, Mr. Moevitt can see that I came in the building at six-eleven, and that I was on time for, um.
It's also security, sometimes the employee goes away, doesn't turn the keys in, we can't get a hold of them, especially if you lose a key, uh, and then, the cost that that continually happens, that's why you have to bring your key there. Our relay key, uh, the exteriors, it can get pretty expensive, considering how many doors some of ours does have.
Any questions about the access control?
If any concerns?
Uh, with JCI, no, I have a monthly cadence needed with this to make sure that our invoices are getting paid and all our concerns are getting addressed, that we're in a timely manner. Uh, this will also include an annual, uh, inspection of the entire system, so we're proactive in creating those preventative maintenance techniques, uh, to make sure that we don't have, like, huge building failures. So, every June one, June tenth or so, JCI will be here for four to five days and went through all of the intricate details of the system to make sure it's ready for the fall.
All right, moving on, so, looking at our policy side, we do have press one eighteen, that will be going to a second reading, um, at this June board meeting. As we said, it's pretty mundane, we're, we're updating the information that needs to be updated, uh, or remember, Hickson does a wonderful job facilitating this event, uh, last month. Um, one thing that I do wanna bring in, I don't know if it's premature here, uh, but there has been some conversation of facility, uh, facility naming policy. Um, and so, what I would like to do is take a, take a slower step into this, if we're thinking about creating some type of policy for this to get community input, so this summer and fall, create a task force, um, and then, have that task force make recommendations to the Board of Education. And so, with this, the, the conversation here is, before we name a building, before we name a bus or a classroom or anything like that, we have a solid policy in place that we can follow, um, when we're making the decision that's, yes, that we wanna do it, or no, that we don't, um, and that is, the, that's the, the thought around this. So, just wanted to get feedback before moving forward on anything here.
It's a good idea.
Okay, all right, I'll move on.
Looking for words.
Wait, I'll, I'll.
You don't hear anything.
Yeah, you're right.
You don't hear anything, I guess.
Yeah, move, move, move on.
You don't hear, you don't know.
Right, uh, so, moving into the finance section, I know that you're alone, has, um, two issues, or, two present, well, actually, one presentation, the other is a discussion, so the first is on financing, and so, we just wanted to give some information to the full board around, and we're not looking at doing any financing, but just giving you an overview of what it would look like if we ever did wanna go out and, uh, finance a project. So, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Hill.
Okay, great, so, I reached out to, um, PMA Securities today, Mr. Bob Lewis, who we have worked with in the past, um, just to go over what some of these funding options are. Um, I did submit a PowerPoint presentation to all board members, including the superintendent, um, just recently, and this is the capital funding option document here. Uh, Mr. Lewis presented to the finance committee meeting last year, um, in reference to what these options are, so today, I just wanted to briefly give a high-level overview of what those options are without going in-depth, but if there are any questions, just let me know. Um, also, I did share with him that in the near future, we'd like for him to come out in person, as he did before, um, just to give you guys more information as to how this process will look for Proviso School District two zero nine. So, if you go towards page two, if the district were to see our, um, available funding for school funding projects, you will see the different options that are available here. Um, the first one is the fund balance contribution, and then, annual operating budget. I wanna pause there, because that is a non-borrowing option, that's what the district did last year, a couple of years ago, uh, when we, uh, used fifty thousand dollars of our, um, educational fund and transferred to capital projects to fund a project. When we go that route, we're not borrowing at all, and so, that's what we've done in the past. However, since we are in the process of trying to rebuild, um, our, uh, pot of money, we, we will wanna shy away from that at this time, but I just wanna give you just an overview of what we've done in the past and what some of those other options are.
So, if you remember from the previous board meeting, Dr. Hill showed a, showed a chart that showed we had fourteen months of reserves in the bank, currently, we have five-point-nine, we expect to close the year at right around six, which is a little bit higher. Um, the reason we went from that fourteen months cash on hand to the six months cash on hand is because they did that, they did that smart.
The transfer.
I'm sorry, I.
No, 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 please add in, jump in at any time. Um, next option would be either by way of referendum bonds and then, life safety bonds, and I will give you an overview of those, um, shortly on the additional slides. Um, then, number three, we have non-referendum bonds, um, issue against the debt service extension base, and then, we have four borrowing paid from our operating funds. So, if you move over to page three, the first one speaks to the referendum bond matrix, this is when we were actually taken to public community vote, and then, you will see the breakdown as to, based on the amount of a hundred thousand dollar market value home, how much it would impact the homeowner. And so, you can see that breakdown here, because when you're going out and doing referendums, that's the first question, how will it impact our taxpayers? And so, if we were to go out for, um, let's say, a, a bond levy for eight million dollars, it would, the average homeowner would pay an additional seventy-six dollars, and you will see the breakdown here, that's if you were to. That's if we were to go that route with referendum, that's page three. Are there any questions in reference to that page here? Okay. The next page is on page two, uh, four, which is dealing with the life safety bonds. So this is issued in evidence of life safety approvals received from ISB. So right now, uh, we, we're in collaboration with, uh, operations and maintenance team this year, there's a project for our roof, right? And so in order to prevent us from going out borrowing, we literally have funds in our life safety account, right? And so we were able to utilize those, but that approval requires ISB need to sign off on it, and so that process took place as well. And if I'm not mistaken, that work is scheduled to take place this summer, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when it talks about the debt service extension, I just want everyone to know, that's a legal limit on how much a school district can actually borrow. Uh, we just can't say, oh, we want fifty million, no, it applies based on really non-referendum bonds, okay? And that will go without vote at all. That's hey, ISB approves it, it's included within our life safety plan, and we can use our life safety dollars to fund that particular project. On page five, uh, there are many questions in reference to what you can use those life safety improvements for. So to prevent from running down the list, I can just allow you guys to take us lands, just to see what some of those were entail. You know, cameras, intercom, um, energy savings, right now it's the roof, you know, paving, sidewalk, playgrounds, things of that nature. So that's on page five. That's for life safety.
I have a question right now. Number nine, asbestos, so you could have technically taken a life safety loan out to pay for the, was it asbestos at West, right, that job?
Right, so with the life safety, it wouldn't have been a loan. So life safety is what we have actually built up over the years. So that's why we were, uh, we didn't have to take out a loan for the roof, because right now, you know, we had our financial consultant who came in, eliminated. You guys remember Dr. Gross and his team, um, since we do have new board members, I thought it was very, it would be beneficial for him to come in and give, um, the new board members an overview of where we are financially. So he will be coming in in June, um, at the board meeting, just to give you a glimpse of where we at as a district. And last year, it was saying, hey, you know, you wanna pause on, you know, seeking out additional funding at this time from our dollars, and just try to build, you know, our pot of funds up again, if that makes sense. But for the life safety, we did not have to take out a loan, we built that over time, and we just kept it there, so it was like a savings as an incentive, okay? But yeah, so that's those, as long as it's included within a life safety plan, and we have funds within that pot of money, we are able to utilize it, okay? Um, next is the life safety bond matrix, again, this just gives you a breakdown based on if we were to go that route, how much it would impact, um, our taxpayers. On page seven, it just gives you, um, an overview of what the debt service extension is, and I mentioned this already, so I won't go into detail, but there is a limit on how much districts can actually, um, take out, uh, utilize funds for. And right now, for this district, it would be about seven million dollars for the district as of two thousand twenty-five. Next up, this just gives you a breakdown of those non-referendum bonds. With a non-referendum bond, that does not need to go out for public vote, okay? Page three, it gives you the capacity again, depending on how much it would be an increase for the taxpayers based on a hundred thousand dollar, um, home value within the area. And on page ten, um, this is what we have done before in the past as well, using, utilizing our operating funds to fund costs. So let's say when we are building a budget for the upcoming year, we will say, okay, based on what we're budgeting for, we wanna allocate at least two to three million dollars in flight to a capital project fund to fund some project here. I know Mr. Taylor and I was in conversation, um, just last week, actually, and he was asking, is there any way for us to, um, at least a couple, um, times throughout the year, at least once a year when we build a budget, are we able to set aside two million dollars to fund a sort of a project? That is what I was already included within the budget, so it's good that he brought that to our attention, because we will be able to build in at least two million dollars to fund some kind of project, um, that operations and maintenance see that we need to, um, keep up with our new buildings and grounds. The goal is for all our buildings to be in good shape, but we know at the same time, we can't fund all of them at the same time, so we have to prioritize. So basically, based on me with Mr. Taylor, he will share what that priority is at the moment, and if we're able to allocate it and include it within the budget, we will. Um, I will be meeting, uh, with the superintendent tomorrow for two hours to go over what that tentative budget, um, would look like for the upcoming year, in addition to just going over some other things that relates to our budget. And then on page eleven, it's just a disclosure, are there any, there are four options, right? So they're all on page two, but if you want more in-depth information, we will have Mr. Lewis come in, if this is what the district wants to do at this time. And that would be for future projects.
So we took out a life safety bond for the roof at West.
That is correct, not a life safety bond, we're aiming at life safety funds.
Life safety funds for that.
That's correct.
Okay. And that was, how much was the roof at West, was it three and a half?
It was about two point, about two point five, two point seven, somewhere around there. Cause we had got a discount, it was a rate, it was a decrease, we thought it was gonna be over two, but it came in under.
Okay. Off the one, right, okay.
So it's the roof on that A building, and so it's not all roofs at Proviso West, it's just the roof on the athletic one at Proviso West.
And so the, looking at, uh, page six, increase, was there an increase then in?
There is if we were to go out and take a loan, so we didn't have a loan, right? So we actually utilized, if you take a look at your document that I provided you guys, um, this is the Treasures Report, this is coming up for our FY twenty-six budget, um, but this is, I wanted to give you where we were at as of April. So under, you will see here, you see capital projects, you will see debt service, and then you will see life safety, then that's where you will pull those funds from, for life safety. So we had money left in fighting safety, and that's where that life safety come from. So it was money that we already had accumulated here over time, okay? Next up, are there any other questions in relation to the options?
One other option that I'd like to consider, I know that Toshia Treasures Office also offers, uh, financing, right? If you take out a bond through them, and I think it would be maybe interesting to see what, what sort of options they offer in terms of possibly go to raise, sort of, you know, better financing terms just.
Right, and again, like you said, those are conversations, you know, we can have, um, with Paul Melasario, um, in addition to Mr. Bob Lewis as well.
But to be very frankly, we're not looking right now to bring anything.
Thank you.
We just want, and for all of you listening, we're not trying to go to our brand right now. Uh, we just want, as we're a new board coming in, we just want you to understand, this is one more of the more complicated sides, I mean, board member just trying to understand the finances. You're seeing, you're now looking, you know, you're helping run, uh, you know, a multi-million, over a hundred million dollar organization, so. We just want us to know what all our options are, so as we're making moves in the future, we're, you know, utilizing our best options. All right, moving on, we'll, uh, just bring discussion around the FY twenty-six budget.
Right, so as I stated earlier, tomorrow, I will be meeting, uh, with the superintendent for a couple hours to go over our tentative budget, um, for the upcoming school year. Again, it's a high-level overview, so when you're building a budget for the upcoming year, the budgets are not approved until by law, September thirtieth, okay? Um, I always like to move a month ahead of time, if that makes sense, um, but we have been in communication, um, with all departments throughout the year, just to get a sense, because a budget is just a plan of what we plan to do, right? It's not set in stone. And so throughout the course of the year, I met with the departments, um, I'll be meeting with the superintendent, as I stated, and it's just our mission plan on how we plan to operate for FY twenty-six. Um, the tentative budget, it will outline all our revenues, it will outline all our expenditures, uh, across all our funds, and you will just have a high-level overview of where we are at. Um, so the plan of action is this, our next step is for me to present the tentative budget to the Board of Education in June. It's slightly early, but I know a lot of districts like to move early, right? By us presenting this tentative budget in June, after that board meeting, we have to place it on display, um, for the community members to come in, just to get an idea of where we at, or what our plan will be for the upcoming year. That sits on display for thirty days. Then after that, we have to hold a public hearing. Once we have that public hearing, then the goal is to adopt that final budget by the September deadline. And so it's important, even though it's September, I would like to have everything complete by August, so that we can go on to get the budget approved, have it set up in our financial management system, and we're ready to rock and roll by the time the teachers come back for the upcoming festival year. Um, for me, it just makes matters easier when we were moving ahead, and not just waiting to the last minute. Even though by law, it says September, the same as I did with the tax levy last year, they said it was due in December, we approved it in November. And so I would like to at least continue this process, but the good news is, once the Board of Education approved the tentative budget in June, is you're just approving a plan. So we still have time throughout the course of the summer to go in and tweak that budget before we present it to you in August for final approval. And what I like about that process as well, is last year, we were in need of support for our bilingual program, and a request came in like in August, right, saying we need five hundred thousand dollars. We were able, for those, for the teachers, we were able to include it. So it's like there's still tweaks that would take place throughout the course of that process, but with the board, the weekly updates, I will let you know what those are throughout the course of that time. So when the second Tuesday of August is here, we're ready to rock and roll, and then we can approve the budget, but the tentative will be approved, um, be set for approval in June. Are there any questions regarding that?
And so, and so this, we're not just starting the budget process. We've been, I know Dr. Hill has been talking with the president, speaking with them one-on-one, she's been doing this for months, I think she started in February, and we sent you some updates on it. We really can't go any faster than this, the state budget's not gonna improve yet. And so with, a big part of the state budget is that, what, what the EDF amounts will be, right? So whether it's gonna be the old study at the three hundred fifty million, if they're gonna cut that, if it's gonna go beyond it, which I doubt. Um, we just have to kind of wait to see what that final EDF, um, allotment will be for us, and we can't do that. This is about the time when the state, uh, will finalize the budget, right? We hope in the coming days, um, the state will be able to finalize, and then we can continue knowing those numbers to kind of move forward more, um, permanently. Any questions? Okay, so moving on, um, Alex and Miss Dean have several renewals that will be coming up. The first one is for the EDF resource contract for our library system.
Thank you. So, uh, we have Police Chief Lee here with us today, who's our technology, uh, integrationist, uh, looking at, uh, renewing our GALE resource database. So this is all of our research component, uh, for our library system.
Thank you. Thank you. The, um, with the GALE, uh, resources, uh, over the past five years, um, our usage has been, uh, consistently low, and, uh, we noticed that last year, and we really started, um, placing more emphasis, uh, in that area to see why. And, um, some of our findings included, um, we, our teachers had not received, uh, professional development. They went probably, uh, they went almost five years without actually being trained, um, on GALE. And so last year, we did, uh, an all-out effort, uh, during our tech update, uh, which was, I think, in October, in the fall, and, uh, we trained all of our teachers, they had an opportunity, uh, to come to learn, uh, how to actually utilize, um, the platform. And this really paid off big as an result. Um, one of the things with GALE, uh, with our students that are doing, uh, high-level, uh, research, we really need this particular, uh, platform to prepare our students even for post-secondary once they leave us to be able to, to start, uh, that process. On the, uh, first page, I've kind of highlighted, uh, for you, the areas that we are, that we're really extremely proud, um, that we improved in, uh, this year. If you turn to the second page and look at our usage, um, during the year of twenty-three and twenty-four, um, when you look at our retrievals and our searches, our students were literally not utilizing, uh, at some of our schools, the GALEs, our platform at all. And, um, we knew that we had to, to, to work on that and, and do something about that. Uh, I do have another, uh, table that we did not include, uh, to give you, um, just a comparison. This year, and we'll, we'll add that for our upcoming board meeting, this year, on an average, uh, our students have, have, have searched, have, uh, searched approximately, uh, they've included approximately seven thousand searches, which is really good, if you look at, um, searches and retrievals and sessions, uh, before, it was pretty low, but on an average, the areas and the content areas that they are searching include science, biography, opposing viewpoints, and also global issues. And, um, this is, you know, the areas where we want them to be, again, as we are preparing them, uh, for those post-secondary studies. I think, uh, also for our advanced placement classes, um, those students have to use some type of search engine or platform similar to this, uh, in order, uh, to meet their graduation requirements and also course requirements. Uh, just to give you an idea, uh, about how much percentage of time was used looking at those, um, that's what, uh, this graph pretty much represents, uh, with our students retrieving information in those products, and then total sessions, our sessions increased also. When you're thinking in terms of a retrieval and a search, when we're, when you're looking at platforms, a search, a search simply means I have a specific topic, and I'm going to, um, if that topic is, um, rights, I wanna know more about rights, so I'm going to enter rights. So I'm going to look at everything that I can find in that area. Now, when we go to retrievals, what am I actually going to download? Okay, so we have seen an increase in, on both sides, which is really good. We want students to do those searches, but we also want our students, uh, to, uh, retrieve information as well. So we are pretty excited about that. The, um, investment, uh, over on the third page, our investment for this year, um, for our renewal is fifty thousand, six oh nine, forty-nine. Um, we have a slight increase of about five percent. Um, last year, we paid about forty-eight thousand for this platform. Um, I think that's pretty consistent with, um, increases, uh, so it's, it's right at a five percent, uh, increase over last year. And then pretty much all of our students, in terms of equity, have access to this platform at school and also at home, which is another great, great thing. So are there any questions, and I've given you probably.
So before, before you drop the question, just wanna add, in this day and age of AI, it's really important to teach our kids how to do, how to do research searches. Um, as our kids are going into college, AI will not be accepted when you do research projects, nor should it be accepted in our, in our place of study. Um, as we're building, bringing on department chairs, I'm gonna have some serious conversations about science departments, and our history departments, because we have great opportunities to engage in the science sphere and the history sphere, which would give our students an opportunity to really engage in research using these types of resources, and also open them up to, um, other opportunities to compete statewide. It's, you know, great to get that on the resume, and do things like that, we haven't done that in some time here, uh, so interested in bringing that part back. Uh, it is a very low cost, but I'm concerned about is the, the usage rate is low, even though that it has increased, it's still not where we would expect it to be. And that's because I do believe. And that's because I do believe students are still going out to the internet and doing searches that could be inappropriate. Um, or not based in research or, or, or whatever.
It's probably pure water.
Right, so, uh, and that at least we did have an issue where the library was not there. They had to lock, close the library down quietly. And then again, as you said, training our teachers, having that expectation, working with other department chairs. So that they understand this as well, so as they're doing some planning and some research, doing some planning, um, and engaging in those conversations with teachers. And directing them that, directing them to these resources.
Yes.
So you go with it.
So we have this platform for them to use, they're not really using it, correct? So, but we want to teach them to use credible sources basically and how to search for the right. When they leave us, they won't, they may not have a, a GALE system. So is there a component in here that teaches them how to prepare for college when they leave here? Cause right now they'll be dependent on this system, but when they leave in a certain year, they need to figure out how to make sure the work that they're doing is credible.
Yeah, so universities will all have some ac- access to some type of database like Epsco and other research areas. And supporting our teachers, right, through that professional development that Miss Lee spoke of, uh, that will be kind of comparable from search engines and their search engines, like knowing how to utilize that and what key terms versus what years to put in and how to navigate that. Those are, those are some of those aspects of that professional development, but all universities will have access to some type of service.
Now there's Google Scholar.
Correct.
My concern is why do we pick GALE versus like ProQuest, Epsco Host, JSTOR?
Well, um, I, I, I asked that question also, uh, last year. Um, one of the things that we have really tried to do with our teachers is not take them so fast and make so many different changes. And, uh, that, that, that is really the main reason. Uh, we wanted to try to keep things for them as consistent as possible and, um.
So the use scale, like GALE's the system.
Yes, GALE has been here.
Have been using.
Yes, sir, they have been, they've been using GALE at least that I'm, that I'm aware of the last six years. But keep in mind, we, you know, we had the pandemic and everything and so they missed, they, you know, there were a lot of missed opportunities even during the five years because GALE told me that they never trained our, our teachers. Our teachers have not been trained, so, uh, we're, we're, you know, we can look at others to answer that question. Botanica, are you familiar with Botanica? Okay, Botanica now has a very competitive platform with GALE.
Yeah, mine would concern with GALE is like ProQuest to Epsco Host are rated far better when it comes to retrieval sources. They have done partnerships with the journals.
Yes.
Right, like I got nothing against GALE as a person, but if, like, I were to go, like, I would want my university to have ProQuest or Epsco Host instead. Further, um, the, the students who are using it, are they, do we know if they're like dual enrollment kids at TRIT? Because wouldn't they also have access through TRIT?
Um.
Yes, they would have access to.
Yes, they would, to TRIT's data bases.
Right, have we drilled down to, to that level, uh, to see the usage there?
I, I do know the impetus of GALE was related to our IB program.
Yes.
And to AP, because college board was highly recommending it. So we had a lot of usage on the front end in our IB courses and in our AP courses with GALE. Um, as sort of an industry standard, as a universally accepted. You know, it, it, it may evolve since then, um, but I believe that was the impetus for going with GALE in the first place. Obviously we can evolve and change.
I think we have a great opportunity this year though to really, while still having something in place with students this coming school year, really dive deeply into some of these other options, especially having, building out a research department in our school system, right? Cause for me, you know, one of the conversations we had was, you know, what are the other, what are, what are students using the colleges? And how does this compare? At that point, this was a, a good kind of like dipping toe in to understand how they even do research. But I think as we build our, our, our expertise and not only that, but our, our usage, um, then really looking at something that's, um, similar to what they'll be doing if they go to a community college or to a four-year. I think it's, I think it's worthy, I think it's worthy of our investigation. We want to make sure we have something in place for this coming school year.
Yeah, I got, like, I, I'm not a dog eater, I think it's false. It's just like, they're all kind of the same. And when it comes to like which database, like as a professional education research, right, like this is my job. I would not pick GALE. Right, I, I'd pick Epsco Host or ProQuest. And that's, that's my opinion.
And, and I would love for you to also, have you, um, have you, uh, viewed Botanica?
I, so I have dabbled with it, but I haven't like explored it as much, but I will.
Please explore, please explore Botanica, because I would, um, I would, I would prefer Botanica over GALE. I'm not sure about the other two, I haven't compared those two, but I have compared them.
But, so here's the thing, I don't want to make a decision here.
Yes.
And then we, six months later, we're like, oh man, maybe we should go on to something else. Like, we should really need to take the time to study this. Um, so that's the reason why we were recommending just staying with GALE for one more year as we really dive in and do some more engagement, especially with the Dr. Butler coming on to kind of guide us through our, our process in choosing the right program for future years.
I have a quick question, from a cost perspective, this is fifty thousand dollars and considering this isn't like the best of the best. How does this compare with better options? Like, are, is this cheaper than some of the better options that we compare?
We have to look at that, how could ProQuest and Epsco, uh, we'd have to look at that concept.
I know that Botanica is cheap.
But we'll, we'll update the memo before, before we, again, that's why we're doing this, is to get feedback to help us craft what we're going to provide to you in June.
Is there concern on PD, feedback on the teachers?
Uh, yes, when we, um, after we completed, um, our sessions, after we completed the training, uh, those teachers did provide feedback to us that attended those sessions, uh, so we did have that information. So, um, even, uh, and we recently, um, sent a, um, feat, we recently sent, uh, a new, a survey to our teachers regarding the use, do not use, what do you like, what is it that you may dislike about a lot of our te- uh, technology platforms? And, uh, GALE was one that was rated pretty, pretty hot. Especially, one of the questions was, uh, is this platform easy to use or not easy or?
It's certainly user-friendly, it was very like, they took their time to make sure it's user-friendly.
Do we have a special, is there, um, is this something that we can, that the board will recommend us log into the laptop and kind of utilize and try it out? And just see it for myself?
The, uh, the GALE, um.
Yeah.
So we have a provisional account.
Yeah, it's through provider, it's through platform.
Yeah, we just, uh.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can look at that.
I would just like to see, just kind of see how it works out and how user accessibility is, to see maybe why kids aren't using it.
Cause with your, um, provisional email address, you should be able to, Michael.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have data on how many searches were done at home versus in the GoLynch?
No, I don't have that, but I can, I can, uh, I can try to research that, I would be glad to research that.
Because if I heard correctly, the, the library at East was inaccessible. Which kind of drives why the numbers were lower at East, right?
I think this just speaks to a broader challenge for us, is we need to drive our students to do more research.
And, and just to be clear, rather, we're going to go with GALE or not, that's not the question, we are going to go with GALE for at least the next year.
That's what we're recommending.
Okay.
But we will, here in logic clear, that we want to look at other options and then look at other pricing. So we will bring that information to you. Yeah, we'll bring that information to you.
And then how many of those students are like TRIT students where it's, they, they can use their TRIT credentials through?
Oh, okay.
Cause if, if they're doing enrollment, if they're enrolling TRIT, then TRIT is already paying for their access to the whole literary scope.
Well, TRIT will have their own database.
Well, TRIT probably uses ProQuest, Epsco. Yeah.
Move on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, I think, oh, for Mike, I'm sorry.
Well, our, our, our next two, as we're, uh, this, uh, our next two items are supporting our, uh, English language, our English learners. So we have two, uh, items, the first is Summit, which is more of our online database to support the curriculum needs. And the other is called Elevation, and that's more of a data warehouse, uh, for, for our students. So with us, we have, uh, Mr. Calieris, our core data for English learners.
So, uh, Summit K twelve actually took the place of Lexia English last year. Uh, we got some feedback from staff that Lexia English was more geared towards younger kids like aged, regarding through fifth grade. It actually provides the English language development standards, which are state mandated, ma- mandated standards that we're supposed to give to all of our students that are considered ELs in the district. Um, our core classes right now for ELs, we either have bilingual sections or we have bridging sections, which means, um, a bridging class as a teacher that's ESL certified. Um, these are core classes, also we're talking English, math, science, social studies. We don't have a ELD curriculum in place for that, so that was the reason why we purchased Summit K twelve, um, last year. Um, we didn't have an opportunity to actually train the staff until February though, unfortunately. And, um, when we take our access test is actually the end of January, early February, so we didn't, we weren't able really to see any growth or, we saw some data usage, but we didn't see any growth from it because they hadn't had the opportunity to use that. So my recommendation is that we, we continue with Summit K twelve so that first of all, that the students are getting the state mandated standards that they're supposed to get in, uh, English language development. And this provides benchmark assessments, progress monitoring and direct instruction through personalized learning plans. So they have these PLPs that the students take a benchmark at the beginning of the school year. It'll put them on their own personal, personalized learning plan. It'll benchmark them again the middle year and again at the end of the year, so you can progress monitor them and see how they're, um, progressing towards their English proficiency, reading the, the domains, um, all four domains and English proficiency in areas of reading, writing, listening and speaking. So the cost for a one-year contract, I was not looking at a multi-year contract because we still don't have a lot of data back yet, is thirty-eight thousand, four hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty-five cents, which includes a PD for teachers. I'd like to really start off the school year, but then the first month, getting them the professional development, start it off with that benchmark right away, progress monitoring throughout the school year and, and collecting the data for you all.
One of the challenges that we had with professional development, from what I saw and what I learned, um, there was never really a time for our EL teachers to come together. Um, and then, so even when we had the district-wide PDs, oftentimes there wasn't a cadence for them to meet. So with the, the schedule that we shared with you guys last working, the TV schedules and the PLCD schedules, we have at least once a month where EL teams get come together. And so that's, you know, nine to ten opportunities for Jim, Jim and his team to really drive some of this professional development, some of these conversations, making sure teachers are trained, that they're using these sources correctly, using, looking at data of, uh, and, and usage as well as overall EL data. Um, so we're really excited about that opportunity now to, for our teachers to have that opportunity to collaborate.
So the one-year contract covers an unlimited amount of students' accounts for, to interact with curriculumism?
Well, it depends on our amount of English language learners that we have in the district, but it covers every single one that we have a, of, we have a hundred.
So we price it based on our current GALE population.
Okay. What, have you had any feedback from teachers at the end of this year, have they been?
Um, yes, those who have been using it, um, I've heard back from not a ton of teachers, to be honest with you. But it, again, it's not like a direct instruction piece for the teachers, it's more them looking at the data to see how the students are progressing over time. Um, so what I've heard back is that the students seem to enjoy it better than Lexia, cause it's more age, age appropriate for them. And there's access to all four domains that they can practice. Our, our two domains that they're struggling the most with are speaking and writing. And this gives them like direct time to actually focus on their speaking and writing, uh, responding to prompts and different things like that. And it actually has an AI component that, that rates their speaking and writing too, which is helpful for the teachers that they, you know, have to spend all their time doing that.
And so we, and we have access to all of that data. We'll be able to be like, we can project trends and control for, okay.
That would be the goal, we don't have that data right now because not enough teachers actually use it from, cause February was pretty much right when access testing happened and that's when we were trained. It had some, some use, but not as much as I'd like to see it. That's why I'm really hoping for a robust kickoff to get it going, get the benchmark going, the progress monitoring and get them on their professional, their personalized learning plans.
So for teachers who don't want to use it, are you, are you just like asking all of them to use it? Right, you're like, hey guys, you know what, you know what I mean?
Right, no, 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 that's something that, that we need to decide which teachers are the teachers that we need to make sure are doing it because they don't need it in every single one of their classes, um, because our teachers again are core, core teachers in the content areas. So we need to, we need to specify exactly which teachers are going to be getting the time to do that. Most likely it would be in the ELA portion of the day, so their, their English language endurance class.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about Summit? Okay.
I'll, okay.
So this next one on elevation, this kind of came about several years ago, we had a very heavy focus on, uh, professional development for our teachers during every half-day in-service, provided professional development on that. And one thing that we were doing as a result of that was sharing our access test scores with staff via this spreadsheet. Uh, staff didn't have readily accessible in Power School, it's in Power School, but it's on the administrative, like, side of Power School. So there wasn't like real-time access, it was a static spreadsheet that was shared. And as a result of that, and when, uh, Mr. Calieris came on board, we, uh, our, we looked at elevation, so this is also another renewal.
So, yeah, and again, the timing of this was very similar to Summit K twelve, where the teachers actually got trained in February again, because that's when we had the actual time during the institute days to provide the, the training. Um, so, yeah, elevation is a, is a data warehouse system for all things EL. So all the forms that we need to send home that are compliance forms, um, your, your progress towards English proficiency, um, your monitoring forms and then all the, just everything to remain in compliance with state and federal regulations. It also provides like a, a warehouse of parent letters that we send home each year that we have to do, um, state mandated letters. Um, so this is one that most districts in the state of Illinois have elevation and use it regularly. We don't use the instructional portion of elevation, cause there is an instructional piece. That portion, we're using Summit K twelve. Um, Summit K twelve and elevation actually work very closely well together because that data can be pulled in as well. So, um, the one-year contract with elevation is thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Again, I'm looking at a one-year contract because I'd really like to see some clear data before we do multiple years.
I have a question, just in general, so we purchased these, but we didn't even implement them until February, right? So is our cadence off then, when we're renewing? I don't have my, like, board.
So, yeah, part of that probably has to do with the fact that I came in in December of, of like, not this past year, but the year before that. So I came in and we were, we were lacking some things, so I brought some things in. And then our, we're using Title III budget for this, so the Title III budget actually opens up September fifteenth, am I right there, Dr. Hill?
That's correct.
Okay, so some of the timing pushed some things off, but I've been working with Dr. Hill to make sure that, that we're getting it timed straight.
So we're not going to renew it at an off-her time, like.
Right, we want, we want to get this, get it started off at the beginning of the school year and kick it off really well again. And actually, um, Miss Lee and I are, are going to be meeting with, not the elevation, but the Summit one tomorrow, just to, to make, talk about how we're going to kick it off for our teachers. Well, I forgot about that.
Being their intentional, to making sure, um, we're getting the training in for them. And then at the very end, completing our, um, surveys and assessments, you know, just to see how they feel about it. And, um, and it's, I've been doing, uh, this is something I started this year with the little small groups, uh, which is what Jim and I will be doing. When we work with our teachers in these small groups, um, sometimes like on those Wednesdays. those Wednesdays, when they're all together in those small groups, it is just so much better. And um they they just share information, and they will raise their hand and say, and I have one group that say, Felicia, we need some more. Schedule us again. I said, when? In two weeks. I did it. So so I think sometimes when we're doing it there on those large scales, I think sometimes people um don't feel comfortable saying, you know, that I don't know how to do this, or I can't do that, or I really don't understand it. But I'm noticing in those smaller settings and and I'm excited for this schedule for the upcoming year for training. I think it's going to be a lot better with this.
Just to clarify, the funding source is Title Three, correct?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, moving on. Actually, next is Merit School of Music. So this is a long-time partner of ours that we're looking to renew this. They set up a great concert, what, last week, two weeks ago? Set in on that, two weeks ago? Forget it. Uh but yeah, pleased with Merit School Music. We have with us uh Ms. Marino, who is our coordinator over English and um arts.
Yes, so we would like to continue our partnership with Merit School Music. Uh they bring us top-notch instructors. Um if you were at graduation on Saturday, you heard the PMSA band do the overture from Wicked. It was incredible. Not one missed notes, not one missed anything. I talked to the band director afterwards, and I said, how many time signature changes and key changes were there? He said, all of them. They played the overture. It it was absolutely amazing. So we've been very pleased with the instructors that they've sent to PMSA. They help us connect uh to scholarships. Uh they help us connect to um, you know, colleges, universities, things like that. My laptop is out of battery. Uh and we just got the service agreement, and you will receive a copy of this with the board memo for the information item. Uh the total cost for the band instructor, breaking down the minutes based on the days, the advanced performances, field trips, administrative hours, is seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. That's for the instructor. And then they have a grant-funded support equipment of fifteen thousand dollars. So they use that to help supply the instruments for our students at PMSA. And that also includes maintenance and repair. And um they've done done phenomenal job. I I remember being in this building during COVID, and we needed special masks for the flute players, for the trumpet players to cover their mouths, but have the slit open so that they play their instruments still. They supplied us with all of those specialty masks. I mean, they are, they are on top of all of this. Um and we have a wonderful relationship with them. So in addition to the seventy-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars for the instructor, we get an additional fifteen thousand dollars that is grant-supported for instruments, for maintenance, for repair, for any curricular supplies and materials that are needed. So um it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to continue with that. We want PMSA to continue to be able to offer beginning band, concert band for woodwinds, concert band for brass, concert band for percussionists. Uh we also offer music history appreciation, and we also have an offering of AP music theory if we need some more students involved in that. So we want to continue to offer these to our PMSA students. Um we have band programs at East and West as well. There's something very special between PMSA and Merit School, and it's a tradition. Um and it's a partnership that has worked for for several years since the beginning of the PMSA. So that kind of leads me into a question, too. We've got East and West, we've got the marching band, we've got the band program there, but there seems to be like, where is the equity piece? And why is PMSA as specific as Merit School, right? You know, we house instruments, and we support East and West financially with instruments as well, but why can't this?
We aren't.
Not that I want to replace Mr. Seals. He's amazing. Like, if you are.
Well, what if you're not?
Providing he's performing at graduation. Oh, long grown, yeah, absolutely. I I so I'm just proud of PMSA, but absolutely. Yeah, Mr. Seals is long grown, and what he is, what he does for the students is amazing. I'm just trying to figure out why this is so different, right? I would have to go back to find out the very beginning of this relationship, but my inkling would be that when you're looking at two large comprehensive high schools, Improvisor East and Improvisor West, you're going to get band directors who want to lead those numbers. This is a smaller-scale school, um with less than a thousand students. It's sort of a specialty. It's a obviously selective enrollment school. The band program is its own kind of cohort, its own special population pulling from the selective enrollment students. Um and so it's not a large-scale band. It's not a marching band. They're not performing at football games and parades.
So they, because they do separate concerts.
They do. It's it's something a little smaller. They are more advanced instrumentally? Or do they have an opportunity then to come in to PMSA? Because I mean, we have students of all musical levels, right? So if you have an advanced music student at the East or West that wants something more challenging, more orchestral.
Or to even receive the same.
Or to even see.
Like that's, that's, we're not even at equity, right, in quality?
Right. Are there options for the other students to come into this band program now?
No, not currently.
Because this is during the day.
Right.
Okay. It's just possibly for PMSA students.
They do have band and orchestra.
Oh, yes. They have concert band, and they have um beginner band, things like that, East and West. It just seems very specific.
They come from East or West. When I was sitting at the the graduation, I've never heard anything like that come from East or West. It's more so marching band. And that seems to be what's drilled more so at those locations. Um.
And I think part of that is also based on student interest. And so I know I've had conversations um more so at West about how we can drive more participation. Because I mean, we were all at graduation. We saw differences between each of the schools. And I think that's where these conversations are coming from. We saw this great performance. I think, you know, East had a solid showing. They were wonderful. And then we saw some differences in West.
And I think it's, you don't know what you don't know. So you got East and West. They're accustomed to marching bands. Where you got PMSA, you're on a whole other level. And those kids at the other schools don't know anything about this.
Right.
So we we gotta kind of figure out a way so it could be equitable for everyone, so that everyone can kind of have the same opportunity. This seems like a great thing for PMSA. But, you know, we 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 need to kind of balance this out.
Because, I mean, even even you have the MSA programs over at both schools. They're not getting access to the very same thing. We're saying we're putting these programs at each school. And if it's for the MSA program at PMSA, those students aren't even aren't even getting access to it.
I mean, I would like to see like, I'm sorry, I I would like to see a comparison of all three schools and what is offered.
And the funding that they offer.
Because I know they regard, they regard it in regards to music and 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 everything. So then I could have a clear picture of of what's going on in the school. And I think that would be a good start, so we can kind of pick up how we can make it a little bit more equitable.
Right. So we could work on it, that comparison.
And we recently bought instruments at both East and West. And I like, I I can't off the top of my head remember how much we spent.
Eight thousand. Thank you.
That was just a bunch.
That was the lies away.
And East was rad. East was fast here.
That's correct.
But just to make sure, like, are the instrument quality that East and West have this one, right? Did they, are they afforded the same like quality of instrument and music and sheet music and things like that? Like, I'm assuming this program comes with sheet music for all those different pieces, right? Does East and West get sheet music that's relevant, contemporary, exciting to the kids, that we're not just using the same thing? Like, how do we elevate the program that East and West while maintaining something of high quality at PMSA as well?
Quick question about the program itself. So PMSA has like beginning band, concert band, the the their main, their main two bands, right?
Yes.
And they have a band director at PMSA who's a full-time staff and part-time staff, a PMSA staff.
It's Matt Brown, and Matt Brown doesn't doesn't do that side. He does choir, sorry.
Yeah, Matt Brown is the full-time staff member for choir and theater, but our band directors is um is a merit school music.
Okay, that that was going to be, so the the band, yeah, director is not PMSA.
Not an employee. We contract them.
Okay.
Yes, he's a contracted employee. Still attends, you know, staff meetings. That's why it's in a contract for how many administrative hours. It's very laid out so that the the band director hired knows what their professional obligations are within the culture of the of PMSA.
So we're paying that person outside of this agreement?
No, this is the agreement.
This is, okay, okay. Just making sure.
No, absolutely. It's um it's the seventy-one thousand for the for the salary employee plus the grant-funded fifteen thousand dollars for musical.
Is there an expectation of that grant? I'm sorry.
No, no, that that's what it is. It's those two buckets of money. The the contract itself is the seventy-one thousand for the instructor. And then this grant-funded that's also in there as sort of a note in the quote that it's grant-funded.
Is there an expectation that that instrument grant funding is going to continue for the next subsequent years?
They have not given any indication that that is ending anytime soon. I believe it's the same grant fund source that they've had since they opened in two thousand and five, but I can get further information.
Yeah, I was just wondering, is it a federal or state? You know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
You're right. Like, is it a private fund? Is it the game's fault? Yeah, who is it?
Yep.
So that's my uh question. And then back to what we're, since this person is a merit school employee, is it possible to get supplemental merit school track or something to that extent for East and West to make it equal in the first place? Does that, does my question make sense?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I I just am thinking, so the idea of having a full-time employee here versus a contractor have, because you don't want to get Mr. Seals and Mr. Acher.
Okay, okay.
At East and West, and there isn't a full, an FTE here. So is it then additional, like merit at East and West in addition to what they have? Or is it?
I I think that comparison will be helpful, so we can see.
I think we also need a little bit, and 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 generate student interest as well. They do need to have enough students to really form an orchestra. So right now, at West, we're struggling to build that band program.
I'm glad you mentioned that because I mentioned to Mr. Acher jokingly, but I was serious. We just had this bid, so he just entered his requisitions. So I'm expecting to see the band do some jam. We had the conversation already because that's a significant amount of funding for instruments. So if you want ROI, right, you want to see return on our investment. So he said he could, he will, he assured me that that would take place next year.
So for example, a band at West, right now, for beginning band, we have a hundred and thirty students that requested that. And that's in addition to our incoming freshman uh projections that we have. So there's a hundred and thirty students total for beginning band. There were two requests for concert band. So not running concert band, uh running beginning band. And then there were enough students for marching band. There were fifty students for marching band that requested that.
Can I ask a question? My understanding is really that we had um regarding the festival that we wanted to have made, and we also have like a mariachi band, which I'm assuming we are taking some of those fan members and using them in the mariachi band that they have at West. I didn't even know that we had. So.
I don't know if that's a club.
But they they do, they do pull students out. They do the same thing for the gospel choir at Improviser West, because Watson pulls those students for that. At uh, I think it's at East, uh they have, no, yeah, it's at East, they do the drum line. So they pull the the drummers as well. So each school has its own niche based on student interest and, you know, where their where uh their instrumentation was in their middle school programs. But Mr. Seals is a full-time employee from beginning to end of day. He's the one that had all those classes, all those numbers, does all the sectionals, does all the games. You know, Mr. Acher at West as a full-time employee as well. For PMSA, it's half the day for the numbers. So it's, you know, it's a di- different portion.
Thank you. I didn't fully understand. Thank you.
And I just want to make it perfect and clear. I didn't bring it up because I think less of East and West band because of the work that Mr. Seals has put into building that band, which I've seen since twenty nineteen. He puts in tremendous effort.
He is everywhere.
He is everywhere. And I've seen, like, I have one of Mr. Seals' students in my house. And the first time he blew that trumpet, so like after Mr. Seals helped him, I'm like, thank you.
Yay.
So that was, it's not intended to be a daily.
No, not at all. I think it's a fair question, and we definitely want to do that comparison and provide that for you. And I was just going to say that Mr. Seals, he is running our summer band camp. So that is generally a highlight of the summer programs, and so we love to see players come up with that.
The band director actually does work at the elementary schools to help gain interest and bring our students.
There is a nice recruitment effort.
There's a nice like pipeline recruitment effort going on at East, which I think is really.
Do any of our students go to like all county or like all-state band?
We do. We do. The Music Educator Association, the IBA Allstate, we do send our students, yes.
Cool.
So that's the Merit School. Thanks. Thank you.
Good, I don't have a musical chart.
All right. So next is a curriculum here called Teach Town. And Teach Town is a curriculum specifically for our most severe and profound special education students. So this is for our students often, it's called our life skills uh students. There are five teachers currently that would uh that are that are teaching our life skills students. Uh this curriculum is a full comprehensive curriculum. We do not have anything currently uh right now uh for our students. Uh so this is filling and meeting. Uh this is something that has been slowly in the works. Last year, we've had a very recent professional development uh for Teach Town for our for our teachers. Uh we've not purchased it yet, but doing an extensively long uh introduction to that that even began last year. So with the five uh teachers uh with this and for our students, uh it's not on here, but the cost is relatively high. It's a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars uh for this that would be funded through uh grant grant funds.
And this is the first time, right, that we had an actual curriculum for these students. So it's a it's a major step in the right direction.
Yes.
So we are collecting a lot, as much feedback as we can from those five teachers. Right now, we've gotten feedback surveys from three of those five, trying to get those other two. So you'll see that in a future board update as well to let you know their their feedback and what they said about the program. Because again, it is a rather large investment for for a small population, but very, very much needed for our students.
Of forty students, if you see this.
All right.
And we have one teacher um that will be um that will be pilot, um that will pilot this uh this summer.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
So at the beginning of summer school, we have one, one of our teachers that will be piloting this program.
Any questions? All right. So that contains the information or discussion items for, that would be in June. And as I said, typically, at the company of the halls, we won't go over approval items, but because this is our first time doing X one, X two, X three. Don't have a lot of approval items anyhow, so this should go over quickly. The first one is my, the Mindset, uh Mindsight, if you've heard about in the last working.
So just uh, yeah, just to reiterate this one again, we've been with Mindsight for about three years since I started here. Um came on to the infrastructure assessment, got quotes from a bunch of vendors, and Mindsight came back to be the uh the most cost-effective. So we've been with them for three years now, uh looking to renew um a three-year contract and increase it. Uh we currently have a managed services, a VC. So what that is, is essentially virtual chief information security officer that does all the scanning, backend penetration, testing, all that, um and makes the recommendations. You know, that position, it's like corporate level's very high-paying position. So we pay a small portion of that person to um to help us with those services. You know, obviously, it wouldn't be a full-time job for us, so it's kind of outsourcing that. Um and we also use them for our managed services. So that's all of our server switches. Um you name it, they're monitoring it with the team engineers twenty-four seven, um updating it, patching it. And um so since we we work with them, we started, it was, we had an F, if we could even get lower than that. Um and we've now gone up to a C+, which is actually higher um cybersecurity posture. That might not seem great, but comparable to districts our sizes, they're, most of them are C minuses. So we've made that huge jump and just looking to continue that growth with them. So just looking for, I'm sorry, a three-year contract with them. Again, the lock-in, that pricing, as everything, you know, continues to kind of go up. Um there's a lot of unknowns, but looking to just increase the VC SO offering slightly, um and the managed services pretty much stay at the similar monthly cost. So that that increase, what you see is the increase of the security services.
Any questions?
All right. This is our next one. So next one is Power School. So again, Power School is our student information system. So all of our data about our students during enrollment administration is housed in Power School. This is how our teachers get their schedules. It's how parents see their their students are going to class and what their grades are. There is an incredible amount of information within Power School. This is a partnership that we've had for a very, very, very long time. And we are continually looking at other aspects that connect with Power School. So for instance, Schoology, Schoology was uh was purchased by Power School recently. That is been our. Schoology was, uh, was purchased by Power School recently, that has been our learning management system, so that is the system that we also use for our teachers to house lesson plans, to, as assignments, uh, so all of that aspect, even the, the conversation and discussion piece on there as well. And we are also using our online registration this year as well, also using Power School, it's supported by apps, I'm sure if you're a parent, you probably have, uh, that app, uh, so you can look at how your student is doing and communicate with the teachers as well. So we are enjoying this partnership, uh, there are many SISs out there, we, again, like Power School, we're looking at a cost of just over a hundred thousand dollars, at a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, a hundred and sixteen, one hundred and eighty-one, eighty-one cents, uh, to renew, uh, this and all of the aspects of our Power School usages. We also did a very, took a close look at the aspects that we were not using, that we did not like, so there were a couple things that we, uh, shaved off of there as well, kind of looking closely, working closely with the IT department, uh, on what we were and were not using. Any questions?
So the comment, I love it for registration, I'm able to register my kid in like five minutes.
Well, if anybody was listening to, yeah, registration, you know, very, very easy to use, please, please, please go on, for whether you are new or returning, please, uh, go in, register, there's all steps online, uh, that show you how to do that, just go to our Instagram website.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, how, how effective have we been with online registrations? Because I know Twitter, it was like two years ago, they were still using paper or.
We had an online system, then we dropped it, went back to paper, and now we're back online.
So that, so we did, yeah, very big learning when we did online for the first time and then switched away from it back to paper. Uh, then when we went back to online, looking very closely at what were the fail points in making those corrections. So being very intentional with that, we were very pleased with the progress so far. I know that all of our support staff and all our administrative assistants are actively working to approve all of those forms and look at those and communicate to the parents if we need something else back from them, so gradually looking at that data.
And our residency, um, is still going to be.
Yes. Yeah, so for new or returning, uh, we are asking to verify that, that residency and submitting the proper documentation, whether you are new or returning. And all the new, new parents out there too, if you're listening, all you have to do is basically come into the school and provide us some basic information about your student, so you can get the access credentials to then complete registration, whether you wanna do that in school or go home and complete it at home.
Well, are we gonna do any workshops, like, for, like, open sessions for parents to come to get that initial, you know, like, five to seven, you know, at their local school, like, West, East, PMSA, for new parents to come and kind of get their login, get themselves set up so they kind of have an idea as to what they're doing, I mean, that's something that's community engagement, I think would be a, a, a big part, uh, in teaming with you guys, to make sure we're reaching the new parents and welcoming them so that they know how to access the Power School system and not to get through uploading, because last school year, I helped a lot of parents with just basic uploading, and they, they, they just didn't know how to do it, but, you know, walking them through it, so to make sure that we give that access.
Yeah, we absolutely do that, yes.
And we have someone to speak Spanish at each one of these locations during that time.
So is Power School also, does it have the ability to switch between languages, like?
Yeah, I believe, on the app, I believe, yeah, you could, you could choose, it'll, it's like, it's not a perfect translation, but it does do the forms in both, like, I think you have to fill them out in English though, or in that sense, so.
And do we have any video recordings of, of trainings? Specifics, solvency of registration? Registration, yeah, and someone can go to YouTube and there's a video on how to do it yourself.
Don't, but we, we, the only thing we have is a step-by-step of just the payment aspect, because that is something new this year, so adding kind of a, a step-by-step gap, we didn't have any videos.
So that's something we can look at.
Yeah.
A frame record, a frame record while somebody's registering the face of it, you know, how to upload. If you're on your phone, what it looks like, a frame record, you know, you're gonna save a picture of the item, you're going to, you know, attach it, you're gonna click here.
Yeah, yeah, so I answered. And I believe that is the.
So you have just, that's a question, was there, like, so for the Spanish, uh, uh, accessibility, is there a way to just poke, Power School would be like, hey, are you guys working on this? Is it even on your radar at all?
Yeah, right, we have good content to host.
Yeah, but I'm sure it is, just, just to, you know, cover our bases. I would hope they are expedited enough based on, like, I'm sure the requests are getting from districts, but it'd be good to see, like, what the roadmap is. Yeah, if like, oh, we're actually gonna, you know. They'll roll out next year, or whatever, then, that's something we can let our community, just, yeah, yeah, and that, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
But we can absolutely contact, yeah, like I said, we have some, we know some people high in the organization.
I think Power School's like the biggest one right now.
They have.
Yeah. And they almost have them out.
Will they, will they be from district to district, will that ever happen?
Whatever was.
Where you can be logging to more than one district at the same time, cause a few of the schools use it, and we use it.
You're working to try to get data sharing.
That would be so helpful.
So a few other things that are gonna be on approval that are not on the agenda, just giving you a heads up, we did have a few things that we talked about at our retreat that would be on the, so we have the agenda for approval, um, and then there's an item that we're gonna be taking today that like we, we'll show up. That is our, close of the agenda in the long run.
Are you ready? Well, um, so, I have a motion to approve the May twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five amended personnel reports including the hiring, resignation, separation, site and position, and these absences. The, um, amendment that we're gonna make is four one A, that individual is, um, your friend's comp right now, so we're replacing four A one with Katrina Singletary.
So, so I would recommend that.
I was, I was too busy trying to pay attention.
We gotta say.
I'm sucking, sucking it.
Ms. Marino, absent, Ms. Dixon. Ms. Morris.
Aye.
Dr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Smith, aye. Ms. Barberhand.
Aye.
Alright, and we are going to table or pull them?
We are pulling them.
We're going to pull and ten. Any old business? New business? Let's help all four join. Okay, Ms. Marino, absent, Ms. Dixon.
Aye.
Ms. Morris.
Aye.
Dr. Fisher.
Aye.
Mr. Ocampo.
Aye.
Ms. Smith, aye. Ms. Barberhand, aye. We are turning it.
Hey, is that a fifty seven?
There was a five.